Can you turn your mic off so I can see if I can hear you? Can you unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Perfect. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Would you call the order? The Sagittuck City Council Workshop for January 19th, 2022. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Becken?
Here.
Garner?
Leo?
Yeah.
Hampton?
Here.
Buster?
Dean?
Here.
Louis is next.
And we have Warren. Just barely. Does anyone have any changes for the agenda today? No? That takes us to our first guest speaker. Ryan, do you want to kick it off?
Um, I could. Yeah, we have Kristen Armstrong, who recently sent some information to city council in regards to a public art installation and she's with us tonight. So I would just do a handoff to Kristen. And we did, we gave her a shot clock. She has a five minute shot clock.
Exactly. I said, count me down when I'm getting down to the list.
So, Mr. Mayor Protem, I would, you know, call on Kristen, go ahead and speak.
Kristen, please go ahead.
Thank you. And first of all, I just want to say I apologize for, there was in the proposal date, a February 3rd, like, we need to know by February 3rd. That was really more of our internal to our staff, like, people, we got to get going on this. So thank, huge thanks to Garnett and Ryan, who were like, holy smoke, we got to get you in front of council. So please, that is not meant as a, you know, you take as much time as you need. And I should have looked more carefully at that. So Ryan, thank you. I'm sure you had a heart attack when you saw that. So the quick context to this is for, it is the SCA's 20th anniversary this year. And so as part of the 20th anniversary programming that we're doing, we are doing what's now become the Quad Community Public Art Installation. So we're hoping to have outdoor art installations. Oh, there's a countdown clock. I love it. In Fenville, Douglas, Holland, and Sagittuck. Outdoor Discovery Center is the Holland address. Fenville would be both at Crane's and we hope a downtown location. Douglas is at Wade's Bayou. I just presented to their city council Monday night and got a tentative okay. And then Sagittuck would be both at the pump house, the history center pump house, as well as SCA and Coughlin Park linked together. All of these are, as you can see up there in the PDF, the six installations are designed and will be, they will be built by community groups designed by Jeremy Barnett and Jason Marconi. That was Playful Spaces, which they did out in front of the SCA, oh jeepers, three years ago now, maybe. And if you take a look at their website, very much in the style of how Jason and Jeremy do things. I like to call them haystacks. They're typically the big kind of tumbles of sticks that are sometimes painted, sometimes natural. Part of what they're interested in is sustainability. So everything will be repurposed, lighting will be solar. So this gives a little bit more information on the particular installation that I'm asking for, for council to consider, which would be in Coughlin Park and tied to an installation that sort of starts at the SCA. So there, it's as though they're jumping across the street is what's happening here. So it is actually this sort of blue wave with red rowboats affixed to it. And what is so special about that Coughlin Park space is the whole installation series is really very deliberately set in spaces that are iconic West Michigan spaces. So spaces that are farm fields, cranes, right, orchards, spaces that are down by the water, Wade's Bayou, pump house, spaces where you've got views of the dunes or the woodlands, Coughlin Park, which is that as well as the river. So we really sought out and identified spaces that we felt said a lot about the community. And we hope through these installations give both guests and locals a way to think about and be in those spaces in a fresh new way. It can be as simple as, gosh, that's a really nifty thing. I love it. But if you start reading signage and you're clicking on the QR codes that will be there and you're getting more of the story, hopefully it just provokes you to think a little more deeply about it. Little side note, interestingly, there are three children's books, which gave Jason and Jeremy deep inspiration for all of these. And that's the type of thing that when you click on the QR codes on the signage, you get to go to websites, you get to read more about this. Those books are there. There's just some really cool things for families and adults too, as you kind of get more into it. Each of the exhibition installations has signage as well as a map that says like, you are here and there's five more in these other places. The, the desire is that people might go find these other ones. But even if you're just only at the one, it should still be a pretty nifty thing in that particular space. So as you can see, yeah, for the who, if you would click on things, you'd be able to see more about Jason and Jeremy. If you're curious, they are also, interestingly, set designers for us. So that's part of their relationship to us. The install date would be, we would propose June 6, 7, 8, and we are doing the installing. Now that would be with obviously Scott Herbert saying, don't dig there, don't dig there. You, that being laid out carefully, but we would provide all the person power, much like Douglas Parks Project. It would be volunteers with a manager leading the installation of that. It would be up on, on view, so to speak, for three months. We would propose from June through the very beginning of September, so through Labor Day. The public debut, wow, it's going to be up. But jump into summer, which I'm sure I will be putting in a special event permit application for later, is the Saturday, the 17th of June. And we're proposing to do some things around that sculpture, which just draws some more attention to it and does some programming around it, activates it, if you will. But obviously it will be up. So public debut is a bit, it will be there. And then strike, meaning we would take it down again with community help or the group we would bring in on the 9th. Yeah. And the one we need to approve by, that's really was more our internally than for you. So again, please. So this gives a good, I think, bird's eye view. The guys sort of drew out what this would look like. And yeah. Is there, thank you. And that just shows a little bit more about specs and safety. So this was part of, you know, some of the conversation that we had, for instance, with Douglas City Council, there were some concerns about, oh, just various interesting questions that people brought up about climbing on things or being around things. And most of those questions were answered, but there were a couple of good ones that I took back to the guys. So we are super flexible. Our desire is to create something that the city loves, is proud of, feels good about. And there's flexibility around this. So I absolutely appreciate people's smart questions about, well, how is this going to work? And what if there's a lot of rain and something sinks? How is that going to work? Those are great questions. So please don't hesitate to ask about that. Ooh, I have eight seconds left. No, it's frozen. Oh, it's a groundhog day. I keep talking for eight seconds forever. So with that, I think I will stop and let you answer, ask questions. Oh, and one last thing I'll say is, I believe it's really all wood. And the rowboats on top of them that kind of flow along are all planted with plants. Specialty Garden Scotty Jacobs is actually our artist in residence for the full year this year. So Scotty and his team are planting them. And some of the programming we'll be doing around that, of course, all year long is around growth and gardening and planting, especially getting people and children engaged with that. So, okay, that was my last eight seconds.
Great.
Scott, if I could.
Yeah, please, please, Lauren.
Kristen, this is fantastic.
I, I'm like, I just want you to know, I've, you know, I'm sure other people feel the same, but what an incredible installation this will be. I think it's absolutely beautiful and I love,
you know, the way it curves around the park. The only question I have is if you've talked to Cow Hill Yacht Club about Venetian Festival and if their stage, if it will interfere at all with their stage and if it needs to be adjusted to allow that stage to be closer to the water, if that's where they're going to put it this year.
Well, and that's a great question. I have not talked to Cow Hill at all. And so, you know, Ryan, that's something you and I can talk about. John is going to talk to Cow Hill. I love the Cow Hill. That's a great question. When we, and I will say the whole, obviously, we very deliberately put this on the edge, knowing, okay, 4th of July, Venetian potentially weddings in Coughlin. The last thing anybody, this can't go up the middle. It's got a skirt, it seems, if it's going to work at all, it's got a skirt perimeter. So, great question, Lauren. You know, Ryan, if we go ahead with this, we can figure out who's talking to Cow Hill about this.
Yeah, sure.
Any other council comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, thanks. I apologize for being late. Fantastic. I echo councilman, council members' comments on the project itself. I think this is wonderful. It's going to be very interesting and I'm certainly supportive. As guys, I have the same question. Have we evaluated how this might impact park usage for other summer events? There's some that are going to be standard events, but others that may come through. I just want to make sure we coordinate with those so we don't impact a ongoing event with the temporary installation. And then you mentioned as well that there'll be some cost quote, quote, from the city in terms of support from DPW. So I just wondered if we've estimated what that might, you know, be from a man hour standpoint or support standpoint. Maybe that's not been evaluated yet.
No, this is very brand new to us. Yeah, this received this week, so.
Hopefully man hours will be very light, more Scott staking out, like, don't misdig here and mess up the sprinkler system type thing. We, we won't be asking for any assistance from city in terms of setup or teardown. And maintenance will all be on us too. It will all be like a habitat project, all community driven. We would obviously coordinate with DPW in terms of not hitting the sprinkler system or anything like that.
Yeah, thank you.
So hopefully keep it really to a minimum on the city's end.
Yeah, that, that was outlined in the, in the documentation that we received yesterday. So I just mentioned that because we have a lot of stuff on our plate from the DPW standpoint for parks and maintenance and city infrastructure and streetscape and so forth. And so, I think, and I think Ryan's very sensitive to this too, making sure that we don't overload them with something new that's going to add, you know, it's just even though maybe a small incremental increase, you add 20 of those and all of a sudden it becomes, yeah, very sensitive to that.
May I?
Holly, please.
I think that our brand has an arts community, public arts programs, public arts installations, murals, et cetera. This is concerts. I mean, this is, this is part of who we are. This is part of why people come here for generations. And I am thrilled. Like Lauren said, just thrilled to see this. I love the blue wave. I didn't see people crawling on it. I, I am in full support of this. I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think everybody can use this park. It's a wide open space. I think, you know, if we need to adjust the stage a little bit, we adjust the stage a little bit. Projects like this are very important, especially with this Quad Community feel. So I, I thank you. As usual, you are very thorough always, just like you were in COVID. You give us plans that are very thought out and well documented. And I just think this is fantastic. So thank you. Thank you.
Mark, anything you'd like to?
Not this time.
Okay.
Chew this up a little bit.
And Garnett's on the call.
Yeah. Yeah, Garnet, go, go ahead, please.
I accidentally raised my hand. Hi, hello. Sorry. I was actually just going to do a thumbs up. This is wonderful. You know, I love what you're doing. I like how it skirts along the side and is really out of the way. I know that the Douglas City Council, I think, temporarily approved it the other day. I think I saw it in the commercial record. So it's nice to see the other communities as a part of this. And I love the Scott, the fact that Scotty Jacobs is your artist in residence this year. That is so awesome. Such a wonderful guy. So this, this is beautiful. You know, we'll, we'll work. Personally, I think we can work with, with Scott Herbert on this and try to make it as minimal a time crunch for him. But, you know, Ryan and Scott, Dean and I will, will move forward on this should we decide to support it. So this is great. Thank you. Sorry, guys. I didn't mean.
We, we planned to call on you anyway. So, yeah. I think Lauren brought up the same concern I had, just given the crowds that we saw last year at the, at the Venetian Fest. But I, I agree. I think it's absolutely wonderful. It's so in keeping with our brand. It's so in keeping with Venetian Fest, frankly.
Maybe they'll turn the stage sideways and make that the backdrop. I mean, like, seriously, right? For one year, who knows?
But I was curious though, um, does your artist feel that it's, it's sturdy enough to withstand sort of a, kind of a bustling summer in Sagittuck and particularly an event of Venetian nights?
Right.
Scale?
Yeah.
Is he comfortable with that?
Jeremy and Jason have definitely designed this in mind with the idea that, as you even put, it can withstand light climbing. So, you know, if a child climbs up on it, it's not going to tumble down. If, if there's five people on it, that's another story. And so that's why we would have good signage that says essentially, this is not for climbing on. But it's also solid enough that it's not going to tumble down, the first person who does it. It's obviously weather and wind resistant. We had a good question about that at Wade's Bayou. It's designed for the elements. They know it's going to be up for three months all summer. Actually, I don't know, you guys might remember when they, we had Playful Spaces, it was put up in September. We actually kept, it was supposed to come down in December, but we liked it so much, we kept it up through March and it made it through the whole winter just fine. So they, they designed for outdoors. So it's awfully solid that way. Not a metal jungle gym for sure, but definitely able to withstand, yes, the hustle and bustle for sure.
Good. And given, you know, Venetian Fest is a nighttime event, it may be here in the plan. Is, is there plans to illuminate it or light it in some way?
I was just like, you guys, what'd you read? Did we? I don't think so. I think it's down at Wade's Bayou that there's a solar powered light in the boat that's floating off the dock at Wade's. I don't think there's any lighting on this. Now that's something, if you were like, okay, girl, we need lighting, then what we would do is talk about putting occasional solar powered in because obviously solar is sustainable. We don't have to have cords anywhere and we could do things like that. So depending on your desire, that would be something I could take back to Jeremy and Jason and say, hey, man, we got to figure out some ways to light this. So think about that and you can get back to us. We got plenty of time to decide that.
Honestly, it's been a while since I've looked at the park at night, just without anything there. So I'm not sure how well lit the park is to start with in those particular areas. So consider, given that we, you know, could have a very large crowd if we do Venetian Night the way we did last year. So, great.
This is lit is very cool.
Yeah.
That was literally strings of Edison bolts.
That's, yeah, that's fantastic.
I don't know that we can do that, but that would be really cool.
Well, you can do a lot of cool stuff with solar now. So.
Oh, Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, um, amazing project. Chris, Kristen and I had a brief discussion yesterday. You know, first I want to say that many municipalities would be thrilled to have this project come in front of them, given the investment that it looks like it would take. I mean, this is really, really cool stuff. So you should feel very fortunate that you have a nonprofit that's willing to make this investment. It is definitely part of the brand, Art Coast. Some of the items that we talked about, and so this, this won't be a surprise to Kristen, but, you know, council should be aware of them. You know, the late, the late coming request of council, but you clarified that that's not a firm February deadline. So, you know, we can relax on that. Two, Douglas has a public art policy that really goes through the nuances of like insurance coverage and kind of like how, you know, how they work through temporary or permanent public art. That's something that, that we should think about looking at as well.
Yes.
All right. It's a good comment. Number of years ago, there was a project in town called Art About Town, Art Around Town?
Art Around Town, yeah.
I believe at the time that a policy was developed for the city for public art installations at the time. Now that has probably just not been looked at recently. So no sense reinventing the wheel. I recall that coming in front of council and us talking about that exact same issue. So.
Okay. Just FYI. So we'll, we'll check to see if anything's on the books. But, you know, those policies are important. Again, there's, there's, like, when you really dive into these public art installations, there's tons of little nuances that can be worked out, but it's important to do that upfront. And then, you know, with, with this park in particular, we've, we've heard concerns about kind of the public peaceful enjoyment of the park. You know, what, when the park was originally purchased, you know, listening to some of the people that have been in the city for, for a long time, they said, you know, this park was purchased or donated basically to the city with that in mind, peaceful public enjoyment. So you kind of think about your everyday taxpayers and, you know, does this type of installation in any way detract from that? Probably not. I, I don't know. That's, but that's something to be aware of and to, to discuss. And then you also have to think about, okay, the next nonprofit that steps up, right? I mean, just thinking about maybe Oxbow, right? They would come in and say, hey, we want to do a big installation too. So, you know, do we, again, do we have like the processes in place to kind of review that upfront rather than being reactionary? I don't know if there's flexibility on location. If this one doesn't work out, we touched on that. It seemed like there was, but.
I would say that the artist's first choice, well, Coughlin, because it's of the SCA-Coughlin relationship, the first choice would be to say, tell us how we could make this work in Coughlin. So if it's like, oh, it needs to be scaled back, it's got to the side, it can't wrap around the front, that would be first choice. Because to take it to another site would change the whole dynamic between SCA. So that would be our first thing would be like, just tell us what we need to do to make it work in Coughlin. Unless council's like, yeah, this is not going to work in Coughlin, then that's another story. And then we could talk about, well, where, where could it work? And that would make me cry. But, but we would also, you know, something's better than nothing. So we would absolutely say, all right, back to the drawing board. Let's figure this out.
Yeah. And then I appreciate the sensitivities to Department of Public Works. I mean, not only just hitting the irrigation lines themselves, but, you know, we have irrigation flying. So is it going to hit the boat and ruin the flowers? When we mow, are we spraying lawn clippings onto the beautiful blue boards? You know, all these little details. I mean, I mean, it's a very exciting project and I hate to, I dislike being the kind of bureaucratic government guy, but I've worked with public art installations where I was in Wisconsin. And I, I know where the sensitive, sensitivity points are at. So the things that I mentioned, I think we should all be aware of. But that said, I'm excited about this. It looks like it's very cool.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Those are very good comments.
Yeah, I might have a couple of questions. Now that I've heard some comments, if I could chime in.
Feel free.
The, the idea behind this is an anniversary of the 20 year anniversary. That's why we want to do something to give back to the community. It speaks for, you know, not only Sagittuck, but the neighboring communities supported us, as opposed to something that's of a permanent nature.
Correct.
Okay. So I, you know, that, that I think is important to share with, with, with public and those concerned about open spaces and, and giving all more and more of our parks back for, other than, you know, passive enjoyment. To like, is it possible, even in the snow, because to go down and kind of have your people kind of spray the, like with some type of spray, kind of a pathway, you know, even above the sun, give you some, I think, correlation to how close it is to the, the east side of, of the park. Yeah, I, it's hard to sit there and look at the picture and then visualize all the different types of events when down there. I mean, once, one vantage or one benchmark is the location of the Cintias, whatever it's called.
Families.
Family of, yeah, the family thing. That gives you a little bit of perspective. No. Not often too well excited for a couple of reasons of the boats on the top of the waves, 10 feet above the ground, that'll be with plants and from weight, from weight standpoint or anything else.
The plants are only in the lower ones, just so you know, Mark. That's a great question. The plants are in the lower ones, the higher ones are empty. And I did notice, as I more carefully read my own proposal, indeed, solar powered lighting for inside the boats, which means they'll glow. So at night, there'll be like a glow in the boats. So a good point about like, is anyone going to be able to see this? Like, at least you'll, in, in terms of running into things, yes. And they're planted low to keep people from out of playing or sitting in the boats, the ones that are low. But then, Mark, exactly, up high, those are empty, big, for just the reasons you said.
Good point about mapping it out though. So Scott could have a view in terms of.
Well, maybe Scott could be involved.
Oh, for sure.
It makes no difference, even if there's snow, at least you can, that's, you know, it's like they use for, you know, marking water lines.
Yeah. And I, and I talked to Kristen about the experience with the Historical Society and what they're trying to do with the signage and kind of the sensitivity, you know, everything that we've just discussed, placement and incorporating other points of view from your, just kind of your average citizen. So.
Great.
And I, I would just echo your points about having a policy and a process about public art. It's, I think that's a no brainer for us. We should adopt and we should be in conversation with the community and your experience. Cause I believe you've got an award.
Yeah, you know, I didn't want to bring that up. I don't want to toot my own horn, but, you know, I got the Public Arts Award in, in state of Wisconsin back in 2018.
Just saying.
So, yeah, I've gone through this and it's a sensitive, it's a sensitive subject and it's such a glorious thing and we should absolutely celebrate it and make it happen. But there's tons of little nuances.
So, so we can leverage your expertise to put some, put some rigor around this process.
I think that's why you guys hired me. Yeah.
One of, one of the reasons the surfing comes up sometimes.
Anyway.
Russ, I think the policy you were referring to was strictly for the Art Around Town project, but that still doesn't mean it doesn't have some, you know, carryover to this. And it might, it might have, you know, a number, some, some, you know, things in common.
Number of the installations that you see in town were from that project. The biggest one that you can probably see, it's easily seen is when it's in the playground, it's the caterpillar, the multicolored caterpillar. That was because the city, if I recall correctly, awarded, or there's some kind of award process that they were allowed to be permanent installations in our parks. And I just remember this particular discussion coming up during that whole project too. Counsel, in my experience in this community for 40 plus years, has been absolutely supportive of the arts community. I don't recall a time ever saying no to anything like this, but doing so in a smart way and, you know, not allowing it to overwhelm us, especially with the gift of Coughlin Park, which, you know, it's not been around all that long. And that is, you know, becoming, I think, the primary park in town. And so anything that might impede the public use of that or impede events needs to be considered as this.
I think we have to be, I think, aware of the, which I remember as the intent from the people who gave us the park. I, I happened to be the council person that was involved in that whole area down there as representative of council. You might have been on the council. Were you on the council when that happened? But the conference made it clear that our intent was for, I don't want to say the common man, but for everybody to enjoy that park. That it had to be an open space for all to enjoy. With emphasis on the, on the public use of the facility. In fact, that was the, the community's intent, because we put, the council crafted a millage to buy that property from Randy King. And we went and got it approved ballot language, put it on a ballot just to be in like a November election of a $1.3 million bond, basically, millage to buy that property. Because he had a whole hotel approved by the city through planning and historical.
Wow.
Kind of think replicating the ship in shore down at that location.
Yep.
With a, with a waterfront bar and restaurant and anything like that, parking underneath and parking at the city parking lot. That was all Coughlin, or Rich Products property that the King Group bought. The public kind of stepped, I, I might hope I'm not boring anybody. It just gives you a historical nature. And where I kind of come from being, and maybe Russia, Russia has a lot of the same stuff, being from here and seeing the evolution and how these things came to be. And so King put a hold on everything, as long as someone gave him 10,000 bucks to hold it, which the city did, which actually left to the creation of the SCA. Actually, it was all part of that end game. And so we were, a lot of discussion local. It came about because the public, once that, that property was cleared, the building that was there was torn down. King got his approval. Now, this didn't take overnight. This was a couple of year process. King then put in this, in the seawall, that's how the seawall got in there, because he was doing his prep to start his project. I don't know, Bobby, were you here then? I hear he caused a lot of this. And so we, the, the community then going by that day in and day out, the cities and the council people and the press, letters, the editor saying, it's great to see this big open space there because only about half, less than half of it was available for sightseeing, because that was a big ass building that was there. And so it was getting in the end of summer into September, early, isn't it September, late September? That, waiting for the vote, a lot of people coming up, like, takes it off the tax rolls, that same old back and forth. And the Coughlin family walked in one day and plopped a $1.3 million check down on the city manager's desk and said, we're not sure it's going to pass, but here's our gift. So you can, the city can buy it. So it's quite a, quite a day. I can, I can actually call, get in the call from the city manager and meeting with the Coughlins later that day on it. So I'm emphasizing how, you know, I think a lot of the community will be concerned, you know, about how, how. concerned, you know, about how, how, how the parts treated and, and, and things like that. And I, I just think, you know, I got my say, but that's, I mean, more against the thing, no, but I think we have to be, you know, understanding of, of that, of that issue.
It's a, it's a really important bit of historical context and thank you for that, Mark. And, and hopefully, I don't know if Scott Sullivan's on tonight, but hopefully this will get some coverage of, of what you're putting forward in the paper. So folks.
As long as he says it's proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gosh, right?
I don't think he's here, but I'm sure we can make sure Scott knows it's proposed. And maybe that's a good way to make sure nobody's surprised, but I, I do think, I do think there's violent agreement that we're, we want to try to find a way to make this happen to everyone's satisfaction and to your points as well, Mark. So, so thank you for that, that context. Uh, I think we're probably ready for the public comment, public comment period emergency. And thank you, Kristen. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So if we do have anyone that would like to make public comment, please limit it to what's on the discussion agenda. And please limit your comments to three minutes and we have, oh, not on the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, please.
Bobby Gaunt, Sagatuck. Actually, I'd planned to come to the workshop hoping that the alliance issue would be on the agenda for discussion. And when I saw that it wasn't, I've had a conversation with Ryan and we're meeting tomorrow. But when I saw that it wasn't, I saw Kristen was and looked at the project and decided I was going to come to the workshop anyway. Really, really appreciate the discussion that happened here this afternoon about the project. I think it's spot on and I love the project. I love pub, I mean, public art is Sagatuck. So anyway, thank you all very much and I'll see you at planning.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you. Jamie, do we have any hands up for public comment?
And yeah, I see Christine.
Yep, Chris, Christine.
Yeah. Can you see me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, perfect. I just want to say, I know the pop-up patio is going to be discussed again tonight with recommendations that the staff has gone through and figured out. I like all the recommendations that, that were, was listed. I really would like to thank the city council and the staff for all their work on this project. I just know how important that the pop-up patios are for the vibe of the city, for the businesses that I really, really am excited and feel very worked with and heard through you guys and through everybody. And I look forward to having the pop-up patio again. So that's all.
Thank you, Christine. Jamie, anyone else that you can see with a hand up or we good? Okay. I think that takes us to item six, discussion items. Ryan, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, sure. First two items A and B are reappointments to, first item A is the Cal Lake Sewer Water Authority. That would be reappointing on Monday, Mr. Mark Becken to that board. And then Board of Review would be a Mr. Nico Leo.
Also discussion. Just a quick question, did we receive any applications aside from, I, I know Mark's obviously an incumbent. But for Nico, I don't know Nico personally, Nico personally.
He's, he's my husband.
Oh, yeah, I understand. Yeah.
He's, he's the chair.
He's the chairman.
He's been there for five years.
Yeah, okay. And I don't think we received any other applications. Okay.
And I, I believe this is, if I, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around, Scott.
No, go ahead.
If I jump in.
No, please do.
I believe this is administrative now that we are posting. So, so basically when your term ends, we haven't done this in the past, but going forward, when your term ends, your position is posted.
Correct.
And whether or not you step up or not.
Right. Yep. So we're doing that. How are you posting it?
There's a reservation in 2020 saying so. It's on the city website.
Website, we posted on the board downstairs as well, or just the website? Okay. And downstairs.
Which is nice too, because then at least we might have some inkling if some, someone is interested or.
Any other counsel?
Any comments? I'm assuming Mr. Becken and Mr. Leo have both expressed interest in continuing their appointments.
At the will of the council.
You just can't quit it.
We need somebody that was all the lip pipes.
Yeah, I got, I know our ol' ol's are buried.
Great. Great. So I think that takes us through A and B.
They still can't roll good stuff.
It, it does. Mr. Mayor Proton, so item C, this is a standard annual item. Really what this is, is the fact that the city collects the, the taxes and then remits to the Ottawa area ISD. Pretty bo, pretty boring stuff.
And is this just standard?
Yeah, it's an annual process and Peter and I were talking about, it'd be great if we could get this on some type of longer term contract or agreement. So we don't have to do this annually, but there probably is some state statute out there that we have to do this on a basis.
Yeah, I think, if I need to chime in on that, I think that there is, it does require us to annually do this.
Yeah. Housekeeping item. Uh, item D, Mr. Mayor Proton, if I could help.
Please. Continue. Wicks Park's boat slips, a subject near and dear to my heart.
So you're gonna enter, you're gonna enter the lottery again.
Wasn't, wasn't lucky last year. I was very unlucky last year.
Oh, you know, we're, we're recommending that we increase the rates based on CPI. We, it wasn't a direct CPI relation. We did jack it up a little bit just to make the, the numbers even. But we're just trying to keep up with the times.
Here's the first increase in three years, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
I think it's too expensive for it's good for those slips, condition of those slips. Location of the slips, size of the slips, no parking, no electric, no amenities other than a boat slip. I, so I'm not, unless we have a plan to go in there, I have any, I don't think we've touched those dumb slips in 20 years. So I really think that if we're going to be jacking these things up, we've, I mean, it's competitive, but I used to pay $2,200, I think it's for the jet club. But I got private parking, I got power, I got water, I got a swimming pool.
But you also have to be a member.
Yes.
And there's a waiting list that goes on for years.
I mean, there's lots of people that paid another $500 because there, there's just not very many of these around, as, as Lauren certainly knows. I just concern that if we're going to be doing this, we ought to have looked at by Navy BK Construction, somebody to just make sure that they're still in, you know, we don't need to put some planking on it, we don't need to pound in a few pilings here or there, that type of stuff. That's my, that's my main thing. If we're gonna, if, if people expect to pay more, they should expect to say, hey, you doing anything to these, you know, it's also.
It's, it's a fair point. When I had one, what, two years ago, I actually talked to the city and said, you know, slip eight is kind of teeter tottering and they said somebody went out, but by the end of the summer, maybe it's just me.
Is that something that Scott Herbert is in charge of, those docks?
I don't know.
I can tell you.
Okay.
Been trying to look at them.
Yeah, but Mark's point is valid. They, they, they are, they are, some of them are kind of getting wobbly. And I'm sure the high water event probably didn't help.
Right. And now the much lower water and that might create another issue where you might have to have step downs.
Or the lower water too would, is going to make them a little more wobbly further up than, like, you know, so I, I, I don't think 1700 is out of, was it going to be 1800?
Seven, I don't.
1800.
Yeah, I don't think that's, that's out of line, but as long as we say our intent is, and now's a good time of year to get somebody, you know, like King, to maybe look at those. Is Dan?
Yeah, and I echo the concerns. And in our, our comments from our community survey, there was once, one person that mentioned this specifically. And I don't know if they're a slip on or not, but they mentioned the condition of the cleats, the dock planks. And said, if we're going to be paying this amount of money, we expect, should expect.
And, I'm sorry.
And two is I'm a little concerned about the increase. I think it's a little bit expensive for city residents particularly to pay for this. I mean, I think it should be just as close to a cost as possible. I mean, that's one of the advantages of living in Sagatuck is having the ability to actually get one of these slips. And I think there should be some relationship between what we're charging, what the actual cost is to improve and maintain those slips. Just my thought. And I don't know what that number exactly is. It seems like it would be less than $1,800.
But you certainly don't want to go backwards, do you?
So I just think if we tie in any improvements that need to be made with this cost increase, you know, and identify who's in charge of any kind of maintenance on those, then I, I would be okay with.
That would be, that would be a way to justify it. I mean, and certainly based on my experience, given the demand in town, even the 1800 would be competitive, I believe with.
Yeah.
And I mentioned one other thing.
And people are like, I'll take it. If it's falling down, I'll take it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm on the water a lot.
Yeah.
So just like the rest of you guys, when you're on your water garden, it's on your car down the street, you're always kind of eagle eye and stuff just to, you know, so. And maybe the boaters have noticed this, but we rent those things out. Probably only half of them are really used by full-time backers, maybe a little more than half. A lot of the people will be from across the river. Will put their name in, if they're lucky enough to get it, they have their own private dock to come across and go to the bars, go to get their mail or something. Does people, do people have a problem with that? Do you know what, does that issue exist? Or it's just, that's just the way it, the cookie crumbles.
And I've noticed that too, and we walk that dock a lot and I've noticed the slips empty and I'd never really thought about why, but that totally.
That's exactly the reason why.
Well, and the other thing is for a lot of people that either come to vacation in this town or people that live in this town, 1700, 1800 is de minimis. I mean, and it, to me, it could almost be an argument. I mean, I'll, this will not benefit me at all. But honestly, making it a little bit more expensive may actually have people think about that and think about, do I, you know, am I going to use this to put a boat? Because it's nice. I think people, when, when they come to town, they like to see, walk the boardwalk, see the boats. And yeah, a lot of empty ones, you know.
Yeah, it's a tough, it's, it's, it's a tough thing to go to a lottery because I think this year you'll probably have many, many more people putting their name in. And I, I knew some people who had kept their boat there for many, 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 many years. It was tomfoolery. They were, I don't know if you know.
Oh, yeah. He was my neighbor.
Yeah, and they lived across the street in the county. Well, they didn't get it after all these years. And so they had to scramble and they were able to get a slip down by Southerner.
Yep.
Uh, which you can lock in long-term, uh, which they were fortunate. But now if someone loses that slip, they're, well, because there is no place to go. So, you know.
Yeah.
And, and as this became more popular, should people get one extra chance if they've been there for three, four, five, six years in a row? Or does that mean that they've been there too long? Or do you just treat everybody equal? I pretty much have told people, well, you just kind of gotta treat everybody equal because they live here too.
We're all taxpayers.
See any other way to do it.
You know.
Lottery that's fair.
Yeah.
City handles it differently. I, I, we've used, we've had it, I've been on the list. We've had it. I think at that time it was a thousand or 1,200 years ago.
Yeah.
It is really nice. It's affordable.
And residents continue to get first cut. So, you know, it, it's a lottery for the residents and if, if.
I don't know if we've ever had to give it to anybody outside the city, actually. It just kind of does, I just look at those empty and see people like Scott who, you know, it's too bad they can't use them because they might use them three, four times a year.
Right.
And so they just, they just sit there.
I don't know how you get around that though.
You just only have to use it for permanent slip, I guess. You just make that part of the rule.
It's a fair point about the condition though. I mean, basically, people.
I don't know why you couldn't. I mean, just a thought.
Could we make it, could we make it?
Condition that it has to be a full-time slip and not a transient slip. Or just, just you put the boat in on the weekend because, you know, and then.
Yeah, I just, you weigh in here. I mean, as far as a transient slip, I mean, if, if they're using it and then leaving to go up to Holland or whatever for the day, you're talking about the people that are going across the river.
People who don't keep their boat there and it's there as a convenience for them just to come.
It's a parking spot.
It's a parking spot. So they don't have to drive their car to town.
Yeah.
It's, and one, and one reason why I'm thinking it's, maybe it's time to give that at least some, you know, discussion internally. It's because we've got the shoppers dock, which we, we had, but not to, it's not to the extent and the quality that it is, it is now.
Right. And there were at least one, if not several comments made in the survey, people complaining about that not being enforced and saying large boats tying up there and just sitting there. When it is supposed to be.
It happens occasionally, but you know, again, I see that a lot. I, I use it, I use that facility. I have a large boat. Not big enough, but you know, it's under the limit.
You know, in all fairness, people notice these things. This is what they notice. It's the little things that they see.
But I just thought I'd bring that up because I always say, we gotta bring that up.
Lauren, what do you think? I just don't, I, I just don't see how we prevent it and I think they're a taxpayer. And if they want to use it in that way, I just don't feel like we can say, you can't use it in that way, you know, by coming over here just once a day or, you know, whatever.
As much as I like the idea, I think for a practical standpoint, you know, it's like, well, you know, first of all, who polices it? You know, we, we haven't seen your boat in slip, we haven't seen your boat in slip eight for three days. And then what do you say? Well.
I don't know how to police it.
My engine broke down, I had to have it looked at at the shop. So I'm, I'm in dry dock, you'll get work.
Yeah, there could be any number of reasons. I know. So I guess I like your, I mean.
No, I just want to point that out, make you aware of that and be prepared to get, to feel those, those questions. I don't know if I, I, you know, like the other thing we ought to do is check to make sure that we still don't have one given to the Coflin family. Because we did give one exclusive use to Coflins when they gave us.
The car?
So, no, a dock. So they could come over from, you know, where they lived on the other side of the river. So they could come in with their, their boat to come into town. That was the only concession we made to them.
I don't know where that's written down. Guessing it's not written down.
I'm sure it's gone. I just kind of threw that.
I could see how they did that, if you were to make that, use that full-time. I am supportive of the increase, but I think there has to be some tangible, visible benefit to that increase, right? The docks look better. And I think maybe even some signage there because no one would even know that those are yeah, public docks without note, without actually having one. So I think maybe some discreet signage saying, I, I don't know.
You know, you're, well.
Yeah, but if you put a public dock sign, then people will think that they can publicly dock. They'll think it's a transient.
No, I just think to acknowledge the fact that it's supported by the city and the city man, manages and maintains those slips. And so what, six, right? Six or eight? I think it's important to.
Eight or nine.
Yeah, but I think.
There, there, yeah, Russ, there were, there were private dock signs. I know that because I knocked one off my first. And it went floating down river, never be seen again. It's my early days of captain.
And where those signs are important is on the river and at the end of the docks where people don't see a vacant spot and zip in there.
But, but also, you know, it goes to the wear and tear on the docks and people have sort of gone DIY. I mean, there's all kinds of different cleats. There's all kinds of different bits of wood and bumpers and, you know. So it does look pretty rustic.
Yes.
You know, so maybe if we're going to bump up the price, maybe we do need to make them look a little bit smarter, but you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think those docks had ever been adjusted from water levels and we've had some pretty low water levels.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I'm more just to, just make sure they're safe.
Yeah.
And, and, and the mooring, you know, pilings are secured.
Ryan, as you, as you address this for city staff, take a look at the survey and look for that comment. Because it was very specific about the things that this person thought needed to be improved. So, you know, there's a lot of nuggets in there. If you haven't read all those comments, spend an hour and read them.
We all have.
Real nuggets in there.
Good stuff. Well, anyways, I think it just speaks to, yeah, it speaks to how popular the town is. And I would love if we could find a way to make more dockage, but I don't know how we, how we tackle that, but I would love to see that. So anyways, back to the water, should we move over to the chain ferry agreement?
Mr. Manager? Let's do it.
All right.
All right. So we had Mr. Sean Steele present to council, I think that was maybe a month ago or so. What he had presented to council that he was willing and able to make a number of capital improvements to the chain ferry operations specifically for. And I've put those in the cover page. This is page 22 of your packet. And what he requested was a two-year extension. So that will be on your agenda for a vote. So that will be on your agenda for a vote on Monday.
Right.
Council, questions, comments? Two questions. Has he put a dollar value on the repairs being proposed? I, I'd seen, I thought, two different lists of things that he was recommending for the year, and I didn't see listed on that list that we had in the packet that the vessel's actually being painted. To answer the question about the dollar value, I don't think we have. I'm just curious from a value standpoint, what he would estimate, what Mr. Steele would estimate that he's investing in this.
Okay.
And I don't know, Mr. Steele, but from what I've heard from others, he's got a great interest in local history. So I applaud his, you know, efforts to make that look great because it's a, there's nothing like it in the country. It's the only place. That's something that was discussed with the Bald Head Work Group last night is trying to get some movement on getting that to be, uh, to get an application going for historic, historic recognition. Kind of shocked it's never been submitted because it would, in my experience, it would clearly qualify. So anyway, look for some maybe more on that. That wouldn't be the city driving it, but I think that the history center might take some interest in that. So painting it before next season. So in the agreement, it wasn't clear who has responsibility for maintaining the ferry landings and the dock structures. Is that city?
I believe it's city, yeah.
So that looked a little tired last year, so I think there needs to be some, um, attention paid to that for the season coming up. Um, it's time to repaint, spruce things up around the. Yeah. I also heard comments from people over the summer, and this is probably more of a staffing issue, which I think was mentioned in the agreement itself. Uh, the ferry was not running on a regular basis. It seemed to close early, wouldn't open on certain days. There was no signage there. I think that's important to relate to Mr. Steele is that if there's a reason for it to be closed on the day when we expect it to be open, there'd be a sign there explaining why. Because people's, people include that in their itinerary when they come to town to ride the ferry. So when it's not there for them to ride, that is a distinct possibility, given the, given this, given the situation we're in. A sign, very simple sign up there would be.
I think that issue was addressed last summer, that same thing, early in the summer, correct, Ryan?
Yeah. Put up that says that the wind's too strong and the current's too strong. Nothing fancy. As a matter of fact, there used to be a whiteboard, I think it's made it so there used to be a whiteboard that used to write on that. Kind of what the conditions were if they weren't running. So just, I think that's out of respect for our people who come to town to ride it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's worth having a conversation with, with Sean, but you know, would seem that that would lend itself to a Facebook page. Uh, the chain ferry, you know, posting, post things about the history, post things about its hours of operation, post things about, yeah, bad weather days or somebody's out sick with COVID days, you know.
Posting that on their social media.
They were.
Yeah, they were.
Uh, they do. Do they have a Facebook page?
Yes.
Always wanted to do that. Yeah, they do have a Facebook page and they have always updated on the page when they're going to be closed, whether they're shore staffed or it's weather related or water related. They're very, very good about that. Um, so that's just FYI.
I need to follow that page. Yeah. Jamie, was that, did you have something else?
Uh, just to note that Mayor.
Oh.
A lot of people walk up there and are not looking at the Facebook page. They don't have any idea how to, how to connect with it. So just, I think that would be.
We're very fortunate that they're running it.
Yeah.
Considering all the challenges, the difficulties, the licensing, complying with all the coast guard. And the fact that that's a big plus, but the fact they've got the mechanical and the equipment that's all included, that we don't pay anything for hauling and moving it about and storing it and.
Yeah.
I think we have consensus that we are very favorably disposed to this. Yes. So absolutely.
Last question.
Go ahead.
One last thing that Scott Herbert has to.
Indeed, indeed.
Is the fee for the year going to be about thirty-six hundred bucks? That's not about right? For him, based on the contract language and that will continue with the, I think it's a CPI increase every year.
Seven percent increase year over year.
Yeah, pretty hefty.
I know.
So based on my calculation, I'm just trying to get a sense of what he's going to be paying for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
Then last, do we have any ridership figures for twenty twenty-one?
We do. And that was presented, I think, in a previous packet.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can get that, circle back on. Yeah, he wrote a check too, didn't he? He wrote us a check. He gave us all our money. And he had his ridership information.
Okay, I just must have missed.
It's okay. Great. Great. Um, good. I think that covers chain ferry. Um, now we're into the pop-up patio recommendation and Ryan, you're, you're kind of considering this kind of like our first reading.
First review.
So, so.
No pressure.
So no pressure, no, no need to make any kind of hard and fast decisions, but let's just talk it out and. Over to you.
Yeah, so these are, you know, these are very high level recommendations of which we have five. This is on top of our existing policy, which we included in our previous policy, um, presentations. This is on page twenty-nine. Page twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, here we are.
Highest levels.
Okay, all right. Uh, so, you know, we give a brief description. And I mentioned that clearly back, we're still dealing with the pandemic. But then I, one of my last sentences, and Kate White wrote this, but then I put some tweaks on it. One of my last sentences in this description is regardless of pandemic status, uh, the city may consider pop-up patio a permanent thing in future years, right? It doesn't have to be pandemic related.
Yeah.
Uh, that was one of our takeaways from, from our feedback, uh, during our presentations. So again, very high level and what the city council committed themselves to sort of kind of was making a decision by the end of February, so businesses could plan on what they want to do with pop-up patios, uh, going into the spring, late spring and summer. So one of our first recommendations is to, um, add a fee to the permit. Uh, and we're recommending a two hundred dollar per parking space per month. Change the maximum allowable. So just a note on that. We think if they, if they pay into it, so we're, and we did review this with the attorney and I think that's in our notes. We feel if, you know, people are paying into it, they're going to utilize it and they're going to use, utilize it efficiently. That would eliminate some of the businesses that, you know, may have thought, hey, this is kind of free to us. What do we have to lose and put out the pop-up patios? If they're, if they have quote unquote skin in the game, we feel like they're going to use it efficiently. Um, and then we will use this dollar amount, uh, per month, per parking space uh, to help mitigate parking, uh, mostly with the inner urban, we're thinking, right? So maybe ramp up our marketing signage with inner urban and then possibly pay into uh, kind of more of a frequent use of the inner urban, more of a trolley system, getting them to the high school parking lot. And who knows? Maybe out to the new spot in Douglas. That's, uh, the Hayworth Building that's being torn down and that's going to be a big parking lot uh, going into the coming summer. So anyways, a fee per month per parking space. Uh, change the maximal allowable dimensions. Kind of limiting that to eight feet by forty feet, no matter how large your building is. You know, one of the concerns that we received was, um, like the Copper Craft, uh, area, right? On Water Street, uh, Water Street, right? Anyone could tell that wasn't heavily utilized, took up a lot of space, a lot of parking spaces. Uh, we're just asking people to, businesses are recommending dial it in. So yeah, that's that. Uh, and then if you're on Water Street with the diagonal parking, uh, those spaces are longer. So we're saying like, go ahead, you can go a little further out. Uh, so that makes, makes sense to us. That doesn't, uh, affect anything in our opinion. Uh, get rid of the carpeting or the ground coverings, can't cover the storm drains. We had some issues with that. Electrical lighting and traffic reflectors, both required all night. Um, so I think our previous, uh, our existing policy just requires one or the other. Uh, we're going to say both. Uh, just in case their lights go out or whatever, we still want reflectors.
Okay.
Um, and then barriers, um, for the pop-up patios cannot be made of flexible material. So, um, non-flexible materials include wooden plastic. Um, examples of flexible materials include rope and canvas. We saw some of that. So hard structure, um, for the pop-up patios. And, you know, those are, based on all the feedback, I, I guess really what we're asking is for businesses to pay into it. Dial it in is meaning tighten it up. We want better aesthetics. We want better safety and, um, that's the long and the short of it. And we have many meetings to work through this. So I'll do my best to answer questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I appreciate all the work that has gone into this because obviously we enjoy it and, but there's also been concerns about a lot of things. So I just appreciate the thoroughness of everything staff has done to go through this, and especially the research on other fees and everything that was involved. Just a couple of questions. If it's a monthly fee, if somebody only wants to do it for July and August, is that going to be allowed? Or is it the entire time of our pop-up patio season? So that was something I was curious about.
A little pricey for some of the businesses come.
Yeah. But, you know, somebody might say, oh, I only want to do it in July and August, so I'm only going to do the two months and that's what I can afford. Are we going to allow that? Or is it going to have to be for the entire time of our pop-up patio season? And then the other thing I was just wondering about is, um, if we put this money towards a particular fund, say our parking fund. And this year we decide it's going to go to the inner urban, um, to have more routes and more signage and, you know, use of that. But could that money down the road be used for a parking structure or more parking spaces? Or things that we put towards physical things that could happen in town that could create more parking?
As long as it's related to what you're eliminating.
Correct.
So we could put it towards a fund. This year, we've decided this is where it's going to go, but in future years, it could go towards any types of. Okay.
Yep.
That sounds great.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. That sounds great.
I got one comment, a real, it's kind of a pet peeve. Well, anyways, but I think we shouldn't, and I think it should be in the agreement that allow no advertising, no flag, no penance, no banners. There were a couple restaurants that advertised on there, you know, I mean, I just don't think that's in, because if one starts, they're all going to start doing it. And, uh, I just, at least, I don't think it should be.
When you say advertising for other things other than.
For the.
Like if it said the name of the restaurant on it.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Or is it?
No, I don't think the name of a restaurant should even be on it.
No, I think what Mark referencing is the Copper Craft. Again, they were, they had Copper Craft Distillery signs.
Yeah, Baldi's had it sitting there all, and it was just a banner that was, you know, and it was kind of tied down. And, I mean, just think of everybody along the road and that it would look pretty. And they got signs on buildings, signs are actually, are actually, uh, governed by our historical. You know, they have to be historically approved and everything else. And then turn around and say, it's allowed just a piece of canvas on these things. I, you know, and everybody else feels, but I, I don't think they should be allowed. If you're trying to keep some consistency, some level of aesthetics. The buildings all have signs on them anyways. They're in front of this building twenty feet away. Necessarily see why they need signs to, so people driving by on their cars can notice, get a little free every time.
I understand where you're coming from on that. I never thought about it, but now that I'm thinking about it. The only, the only thing I would think is like, sometimes people might use that space. Uh, you know, thinking they could use it and by having signage on there, they're, that's specific to that restaurant. Just like a Baldi's or something that it's kind of hard to tell that they're.
Go kick them out. Trying to walk into Wally's with a beer for something.
But, yeah.
But that's part of, part of managing your own.
Um, I just, uh, kudos to Kate for doing a really, really thorough job. I was thrilled to hear Christine Murphy Pierce say that she felt heard and worked with. I wanted to cheer when she said that.
Yeah, compliments to the staff for. That's great.
Yeah, Cindy, thank you. I mean, this, this is, it's a, it's a really difficult issue. It's a really big issue. It's, we are sort of, you know, going into uncharted area, all of us in this. And I, I was sort of going through Kate's links and, and maybe Cindy's when, uh, there's a US EPA report about parking spaces and community places. And since October, I've been in LA, Cleveland, Chicago, Detroit, Pittsburgh and downtown in all of those places. And it just occurred to me what a loss of identity there is when you're in a big city downtown. And how we actually are so lucky that our sense of place just gets better and better. And I think it's just really attractive to people and, um, we've had really good, you know, COVID summers, you know, we, we have had our tourist uh, levels increase. So I, I think that pop-up patios are really important uh, for us to keep our sense of space and keep our downtown as a gem, a, a gem, not a gym, but, um, sort of a place that people feel safe to congregate. And it's fun and the pop-up patios do that. So uh, my question is to Mark's point, I do want to focus on aesthetics. I did not love to see cinder blocks. I love to see plants. So I, I would like a little nod to that and signage. Maybe that's something we can talk to Cindy about. My other question is, are we going to limit the number? Are we just going to allow everyone to have it? And to Lauren's point, I actually think that we should ask people to commit whether they're going to go ahead and do it for the summer and pay that amount instead of taking parking in July or taking parking in August. I think it's, it's, um, we talked about this last year. It's a commitment for a business. I mean, there's a lot involved with licensing, with hard costs. So I think people should maybe get in or get out and. Cause I don't think, I don't think, I don't know, are we just going to let, is it just everyone that wants it? What, what are we thinking?
I've got a few comments about several things. And, and as we're saying, you're talking about the fee, what got me thinking about this is that we charge ten dollars for the day at either of our city lots, the bank or the SCA lot. Why not make it ten dollars a day for the fee? Ties be three hundred and what, ten dollars a month, three hundred dollars a month, depending on the number of days in the month. But that correlates with something we've already established for the use of a parking spot for the entire day. So food for thought, because it works out to like six dollars or forty-five cents a day, the way it's currently structured. I don't know, just anticipating, how'd you come up with a number? Does it equate to anything that you currently do in town? Since we don't have paid parking except for that, just a thought. Uh, two is, and people are bringing up the same things that I've kind of been thinking about is, I really think it would be important to set a timeframe beginning, say like May first, ending October thirty-first. If you're in, you're in for that entire time. If you're not, you know, uh, you can pay for the entire time. If you only choose to set up for June and July, that's entirely your choice. But if you're in, you're in for the entire period. And I just throw those dates out as an example. Cause I think something that I noticed, and I think, well, several people mentioned to me is that they kind of hung around longer after the season when they, you know, so that the city just needs to set a date and say, you're up here, you're down here.
And we do have those dates.
What is the start date, Ryan?
Oh, we have those dates, but. Those dates are in our existing policy, the setup and breakdown time. And again, I think the, the fee, if you're paying into it, at that dollar amount, two hundred or three hundred, you're going to be much more likely to you, you're not going to, you're not going to do it if you're not going to use it. In my.
Right.
That should help with that situation, I think.
Question to me on this, the timeframe and the fee, how you're going to apply it and stuff. You say it starts May one, you're in or out, but a lot of times there's no business or people aren't setting up for May. They may not set up to the middle of May or the weekend. You know, are you going to jab them for that whole month if, you know, or, or are you going to allow half months at the start of a season? But not at the back end, you know, just be a little more friendlier from that perspective, based on whether or when they actually get up and rolling. Um, that's a question, but and maybe it's just, you know, regardless of how long you do it, there's going to be a minimum of two months. To at least, to at least protect July and August or something.
Shoulder season, right? So, so maybe we do charge less because parking's not an issue in May, parking.
Other weekends are still pretty, can be through September, pretty busy.
True, true. But we could look at, I, depending on the dates. True, true, but we could look at, depending on the dates. I mean, we do want to encourage people to be here when it's slower, right?
I think we're on the same page on this. I just think we need to set some parameters so they know this way you can start this and we can get in. I think another thing that we need to, and again, I'm always thinking, I don't think about these as pop-up patios. This is expanded outdoor dining. That's really what it is. Let's not call it something that's not, because there's bars and restaurants that are gonna be doing this. But that brings up another conversation and that's, are we gonna limit it to bars and restaurants? Because we had the cigar shop owner on our, one of our calls expressing interest in this. I personally don't think this should be opened up to retail. I think it should be reserved for expanded outdoor dining, period. That's my position.
That's one way of defining it, you know, kind of zeroing in on, on, on that aspect of it. Because it wasn't, that was a discussion we had the first year it came, came up. Yeah, Holly was involved in that. You know, do we let everyone do it or do we just let the restaurants do it and we decide, well, it's open to anybody who wants to, to do it? Um, I do think that it encouraged some people to do retail outside on the sidewalks, which we didn't have before. Which I don't think is really allowed, even unless you, I think Cindy's saying that they're not, it's not. Even the sidewalk, the restaurants that do sidewalk, not in the patio, not in the street, but on the sidewalks. Had to get a special license and go through certain criteria in expanding their liquor license and everything else to do that. So that I think we have to probably say. Do you include ice cream shops and do you include the cigar guy, you know?
Yeah, I think we've got some decisions to make on that.
Yes, a lot of guitars, cigars pay for two bucks.
And, and I'm thinking back to what Holly had mentioned is that. We could request that applicants submitted drawing of the proposed expanded dining with application, right? And materials to be used. That way we can make a decision.
Cindy's nodding her head, yes.
I mean, that's a simple thing to do. And. I'm gonna use the word streetscape because I kept hearing from people last summer that the, the town, just the streetscape looked kind of trashy. And I think, you know, some of the, not just the expanded outdoor dining, but you know, just it was a busy summer. Everybody's overwhelmed. We didn't have enough DPW staff. I mean, we just got overwhelmed. So I think we need to be thinking about like the advertising signs detract from the streetscape. That thing that Holly talks about, you go into a Chicago or New York or wherever, there's a feel to it, but there's also a look. So I took as a look and I think we need to be careful that we don't detract from that. We want to add to. I think an advertising sign detracts from that streetscape. So that's, I, I, I'm with everybody else. It sounds like in terms of trying to limit that.
Thanks. I mean, I think, I think we're all talking. Everyone's supportive, but we're talking about guardrails, literally and figuratively, you know, so. But I, I know that we've got Cindy and Garnet still available. I know Garnet's sort of enjoying outdoor dining right now. So I don't know if she wants to share any thoughts.
Yes, I am and it's everywhere out here and what you don't see. So to kind of go along with the expanded outdoor dining theme. Yeah, what you don't see are the retail businesses expanding their entity outside. I will remind everybody that part of this applied to everybody in twenty nineteen. When COVID limited the ability for folks to be indoors. Whether it was a t-shirt shop, the ice cream store, or a cigar bar, or whatever. Twenty nineteen and even, and not necessarily twenty, well, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, but that first year, nobody wanted to be indoors. It didn't matter what it was. And so we were trying to help everybody, whether, whether they were a retailer or a bar and restaurant. That is, that is not the case now. It seems to be. Less of a concern for our retail entities. And, and really honestly, the folks that we've heard from the most. Vociferously have been our bar and restaurant owners mostly, so. Yeah, and I agree with everything everybody said. I've been taking notes here, so I don't lose anything. But you know, it, part of it has to be worth their time and energy, right? So the two hundred, so Russ, regarding your comment about the ten dollar payment for a parking space. I bet you five bucks that they're not staying there the whole day. Those folks, because I've worked those parking lots and helped with volunteer with those parking lots. And people are in for a couple hours. So you've got those parking spaces turning over quite a bit, especially in the summer season. So you're, you're actually, if I may, if you're actually bringing in quite a bit more on that traffic that's in that parking spot. So the, the, the amount that a, a restaurant or a bar is paying needs to be, you know, worth. Worth the while, so to speak, and it, yeah, so I'll shut up there.
Thanks, Garnet. Cindy, anything you think we should be thinking about?
Just that I have the current dates for, are from April one to November thirty-one. But everything has to be removed if there is a forecast of plowable snow.
Right, thanks. Great, I think this was a good first start at it and.
But those dates, big the question, are we going to allow people to go from June through September? Do you have to have the whole, you know, the whole season? You're like, someone said you're either in or you're out. I, I don't know if that's really a good way to go.
I don't know if this is out of order, but I see that Christine is still on. Could we?
We have public comment again.
So come back to. Heads, heads up Christine, if you want to jump in at public comment, we're almost there, so, okay.
The only, the only thing I had, just obviously this is just dealing with parking spaces only. And that anybody that is using the public sidewalk, that's something entirely different and that's through Cindy. And that's through applications that come before us. Am I correct with that, that?
Yeah, I really think there's even an ordinance. I believe there's an ordinance.
Because there's, you know, obviously some people only use the sidewalk like grow. They only use their sidewalk. And is that something they have to get approved every year? And do they pay anything for that? I don't, I, I just don't know the answer to that.
Sidewalk cafe permits, do those go in front of council? That's just administrative approval?
That is, goes in front of council for the sidewalk cafes. Um, and they do, they only pay for the initial agreement to be set up with the revocable license. And. And they did, they did have a timeframe where they could be set up. They had to be removed by November first. Um, they also had some difficulties with bringing all their things in at the end of the day. That removing all their tables and chairs from the pop, from the sidewalk cafe is very challenging. For a lot of places and the sales on the sidewalk, like t-shirts and toys or whatever it might have in the. In the curb strip between the sidewalk and the curb, that was authorized through a blanket license. So they did not individually come in and get a permit to do that. We just did a blanket license. Everybody can do it. And there was not really any limitations. It just couldn't block the sidewalk and it couldn't go over the curb.
Does that mean we have to reauthorize that?
That's an, that's an annual thing that the council has to authorize if they want to do a blanket license for retail. If they don't, then it's not permitted.
That's for retail and then what, as far as restaurants go, using the sidewalks? Is that a one-time before council or do they have to do that annually?
One time.
One time, great.
And all of that can be changed. I mean, that's why we're having these discussions.
Yeah, I, these are great questions, Lauren. I appreciate that because where I, where my mind goes to this is. Public space use. That's essentially what we're talking about. And I think we have an opportunity to kind of step back and say, okay, can we pull the sidewalk cafes? And expanded outdoor dining or whatever else is gonna be coming up, that permits. Pulled underneath one policy and procedure and incorporate everything. So that way we've got a very uniform approach to it. It all looks the same. It all flows through the same processes. Because it kind of feels piecemeal to me right now. And I just think we have an opportunity right now just to kind of bring this all together for forward use. Just because it's, it's all public space use and it should, in my mind, it should all be under one umbrella. It's not.
And I, I would also add to that, Russ, that I, I think that this is a moving. Issue and, and I think we're all going to learn and as we go. And we're gonna have a different conversation in a year, probably. This is gonna be something that will be. We may not get it exactly right this summer and we'll tweak as we go.
And, and I appreciate where you're coming from, Holly. I just think we need to look at being the best on this that we can, not just settle for good. I think there's an opportunity here to make it more efficient for the city staff to manage this. That's simply what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, and I, I think the homework's been done too, I mean.
And the other aspect of this that I think is going to come up is you're gonna have a situation where a private business is gonna want to partner with. Or use part of their space that doesn't, perhaps they may partner with somebody, use their space for some other use. I don't know of any examples where this might happen, but I know other cities are running into this where you've got a private enterprise that's beginning to use a parking lot, for instance, that they might own. For something that the city didn't anticipate, some kind of use. So I think that can be included in that as well. I think we just need to be forward thinking on this.
Give me private property for, for commercial use? Well.
Yeah, some, some.
I think we have ordinances that, that regulate that and govern that. Cause we've had that before and then we. For the guy, the guy with the mobile t-shirt shop that pulled up into someone's. Which is actually. We created licenses to control all of that stuff, or I mean, ordinance is.
Good, are we, are we there on pop-ups? Great, then I think we've covered the discussion items. That leads us to our next opportunity for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes and. Do we have any hands out in the audience? There's Christine, go ahead, Christine.
Uh, I agree with Mark. I wouldn't want to see the flat, like the banners and all that stuff all over the. The outdoor dining barriers and things like that. I think when people put the plants. Something more organic, environmental, that kind of look, I think looks ten times more better. Then the banners and just the little fences that they put up, things like that. I have a sidewalk cafe permit and I have the outdoor one permit too. So they are two different things. But I really, 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 really just like all of your time and effort once again on this. And I think there is a way to do it safely. And that it can continue on every summer and that we, you know, maybe not every summer has to be a huge discussion about it. Uh, and that things can get tweaked a little bit, but that it is something that is always going to be here in Sagatuck kind of thing. So that's all.
Thanks, Christine. Go ahead, Holly.
Yeah.
What do you feel about charging and when should it start? I mean, I know that, I know you're fine with charging, but I'm just wondering.
If you want your pop-up patio, you get it May, April one to November thirty-first. You pay, you pay for all those months, whether you put your stuff out there or not. I think, cause then you're gonna get, oh, I want to only do it on these days or those days. This is what the permit's for and this is what you pay for. Unfortunately, it might not work for some, others it might work. Do you know what I mean? But I think this, there's just gonna be too many different cases of, or if you do it May one. If, you know, people aren't open yet till May one, then, you know, it starts May one too. Uh, but Holly, like what Holly said about having those in the off-season is super helpful. Though like the May, you know, the April is great, the beginning of May is great. And then having them in Octo-, you know, September, October, November, those are really solid months for the outdoor dining.
So you can pay for those dates, but you don't necessarily have to construct your patio. That's up to you.
So if you're like, you're, if you're like, oh, I'm done after, you know, uh, October, but you still have to pay for what the permit's for. I mean.
But you may not build it until Memorial Day, but you're still paying at the start of the, the pop-up patio season. It, it, it's easy, much more controllable that way.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna do the Chicago in the winter thing where, where chairs go out because it's your spot.
But what, what's interesting, I think, about keeping the, and Christine reminded me. The, the, the sidewalk cafe different from the outdoor patio is that the pop-up, the, the cafes are year-round. Okay, so Christine can use hers with some haters outside and she does pretty much year-round.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that's a differentiation you gotta keep in mind by trying to meld it all together, like, together.
Yeah, my suggestion was have an umbrella policy, but then have separate. It's not just one, but it would have separate public uses.
You're too damn organized in your brain.
I'll make one observation. I'm, I'm not sure, a cookie, cookie cutter is the wrong word, but a one-size-fits-all. I'm not sure that's. I'm there yet, but we can talk more about it.
Yeah.
Anyways, thank you for that, Christine.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I, I don't think we've got anybody else, public comment. Jamie, am I right? I think we're done on public comment. Great.
Oh, Cindy's.
Oh, Cindy, go for it.
I don't know, because I wasn't paying attention to part of the meeting. If Ryan brought up the rise in small cell towers, will be on your agenda packet for Monday.
I did not bring that up. Thank you, Cindy. Yeah, they're ready to rock and roll. They got their permits and they're ready for council approval.
You go through this story?
I did, yeah.
So we're, so we're not landing in the aircraft around here, so we're okay with five G, right?
Actually, we're just looking at two of them on Monday and those are in existing poles in residential neighborhoods. One is right by the school and the other one is on. I just had it up on my screen and I can't just pop up patio, but there's one on Francis and one on Elizabeth.
Yeah, and the question was asked, I went through a historical society and.
Those areas are not in the historic district.
Doesn't have to go. I thought they'd be downtown.
There is one that's coming, that's in downtown, that did go through a historic district. He's just doesn't have all the information in for that third one.
Let's take whatever we can get.
Yeah, that sounds good. Great, um, good. I think we are now at correspondence, which we have none. None. So now we are into item nine, council comments. Roundtable, Mark?
Holly? I just want to thank Christine for her advocacy and talking to other restaurant owners. And really sticking with us on the pop-up patio and thanks again to staff.
Russ, anything for you?
Uh, just, I was remiss in not thanking city staff for the work on the expanded outdoor dining. It's, it's good for the city. I don't see it ever going away now that we've already opened up the door for it. I just want it to be thoughtful and be as best as we can with this, with the. People that are gonna take advantage of it. Couple of questions for city staff. One is, do we have a parking lot accounting yet for the twenty twenty-one season from the two lots? I know Peter's not on the call, but like to see some numbers around that.
So, yes.
Two is, is it possible to get that, a word version of the community survey with the comments?
Uh, yes.
Cause I'm, I wanted to start to organize those into, they can be easily categorized and was helpful to me to do that if I could have a word document. And is that gonna be made public? Is that already public?
It already is.
Comments, okay.
Yeah, we sent the results.
Okay, so include the comments?
Just one comment, just a, I think the bank parking lot is, doesn't come to the city. It's a private parking lot, so the two lots are just.
Just SCA.
Just SCA.
What was your second, I am parking revenue and.
Great, thanks, Russ.
I don't have anything additional to add.
Great. I would just like to reiterate, just I think how fortunate and blessed we are as a community to have people in the arts. And people in kind of the entertainment and dining industry that continue to come to us with really forward-thinking, really innovative ideas. That really make this town what it is. So just a big thank you to them. And I'll ask Garn if she has anything she'd like to share during council comments.
No, I spoke enough. Thank you so much. I'll see you guys Monday.
All right, see you Monday, Garn. Have safe travels. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Leo, second by Stanton. I think we can do this by voice vote. Yes, all in favor?
So Mark.